So we'll just make sure Peter's set up. And while we're waiting, I'll just make a couple of announcements for the public and those that'll be watching our meeting. That during our virtual meetings, we do request that you keep your cameras off. Until if you're doing a presentation, until you're invited to turn your cameras on. And please, the general public watching, please keep your cameras off and on mute. And we do disable the chat, so that'll be happening as well. And tonight, it's great, we have some public consultation happening. And we're just waiting for one more council member and we'll be starting momentarily. Is Peter gonna be online down there with a video or is he gonna be on phone?
Hi, Sheriff, it'll be phone.
Phone, okay.
And it should be momentarily.
Okay, well, we can start with the housekeeping items while we're waiting for Council Kistemaker to get on board downstairs. I'm sure he'd be fine with that. So if I can get a mover and a seconder to call the meeting to order, please move by Councilor Belinda Kistemaker, second by Councilor John Peroff. Be it resolved that we do call this regular meeting of council to order on October 18th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Those in favor? And that is carried. And I would like to make just a short announcement tonight for those of the public and for council. We all know that we've had Eileen Singh join the team at the township and that she'll be taking over as CAO in full duty as of January 1st. But the continuance of our meetings, Eileen will be hosting the meetings with support from Gail in the background. So she'll be our sitting during the meetings. And I can hear a microphone in the background, someone's on. Okay, and I'll hand the meeting or the this point in the agenda over to Councilor Drago Stefanik or Deputy Mayor for 2022 for Indigenous land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mayor. The Council of Preparation Township of Horn Payne would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging that the land on which we gather here today is the Treaty 9, 1905, 1906 territory. The traditional lands of Indigenous peoples. As we work towards reconciliation, may we all live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Stefanik. So continuing on, item number three is review and note any changes to the agenda. The agenda is here as presented. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please move by Councilor.
I'll move it.
Oh, Peter Kistemaker, second by Councilor Drago Stefanik. Be it resolved that council does hereby approve the agenda as presented, those in favor?
Aye.
And that is carried. And thank you for joining us, Councilor Kistemaker. As you can see, we're just going through some housekeeping issues.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, continuing on is item number five, disclosure of peculiar interest and general nature thereof and declaration of conflict of interest. And we do have one declaration this evening, Councilor Drago Stefanik.
Yeah, Mayor, through you declaring conflict of interest under section 11.10, closed session subsection 11.1. I will not be tending or participating in the closed session. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilor Stefanik, and thank you for getting your paperwork in and we have all that. And moving on, part of our exciting council meeting tonight is the deputation presentations. And we have a presentation tonight, the Planning Partnership MDB Community Improvement Plan, which we all know at council and in the community that it's taken us many steps to get to this point to create a community improvement plan. And I invite Donna Hyde and Clark Hoskin to our meeting tonight. And I believe both of them are on, you can, you're welcome to turn your cameras on. Hi, Donna.
Hi.
Hope I didn't mess your last name up too badly.
No, that was perfect, Heidi, that is absolutely perfect.
Okay, well, I'm glad you could join us tonight virtually. And I'll hand the floor completely over that you can do your presentation. And I'm sure someone can set you up with a share screen.
Okay, awesome. So if I could have the screen, then I can share it. It's currently disabled. And Clark Hoskin's also on the call. Clark will just get a little bit of a wave out. See?
Welcome, Clark. Okay, I think you're able to share a screen there now, Donna.
Oh, you know what? It's, um, it's making me go into my systems to enable the go-to meeting platform. It, can you share it on your screen?
Um, I think one of our staff, that in the background.
Can, but I'll have to just change things to my laptop first.
Uh, yeah, if you just want to give us a minute, we'll, we'll. Okay. I'm sorry, I did not know.
Oh, that's all right. Do you want to? Donna, do you want to tell a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, so we, we are, Clark and I are both very happy to be here at council tonight to present the draft community improvement plan. It's been a terrific process over the last several months, working with staff and members of the public and business owners. And we're really excited to, to present to council tonight what we've learned and what our draft recommendations are before we go forward with a final public session and connection with the Ministry of Housing. And so we want to walk through a little bit about what we've done so far. Then we will give you a summary of what we've heard, business owners and, and residents that we've spoken to. And then Clark and I will go through the recommendations that deal with community improvement, physical projects, and also, sorry, also grant programs, funding and grant programs. So hopefully. We are. Just going to try something while you're doing. Clark, do you have it on your screen? Do you have go-to meeting enabled for screen sharing on your computer?
I could, I could try. I don't have the ability to share at the moment, but.
So if the clerk can make Clark able to share his screen, we could see.
Donna, if you, I think you might have to cancel the sharing on your end.
Okay, I didn't, I couldn't, I couldn't get into it. So I have to do, I had to do something on my preferences, so I can't get into it.
Okay, we're just going to try and make Clark, get him.
Okay, perfect, perfect. And you have it easy there, Clark, I can email it to you right now.
I think I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, is that showing up?
Okay. Yeah. And maybe just put it on, put it on full screen, Clark.
Sure, it's a, it's a PDF. I don't actually have a PowerPoint, so.
No, we just do the PDF, you can do PDF full screen.
Okay.
But if not, we can just go ahead, this is, this is fine.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think I can do that, but maybe just leave it as, yeah.
Let's go back, okay, so we'll go to the next slide. Thanks, Clark. So to begin by clarifying the study area, the area that we looked at for the community improvement plan is the entire area outlined with the solid red line. And so you can see that we've highlighted some of the businesses and schools, hospital, OPP, just so you can get oriented to the area. So basically, the settled area of Horn Payne. If you can go to the next slide. So a community improvement plan is a planning tool. It supports strategic community investment priorities. And there's two components. For the private sector, we identify opportunities to improve, to, we identify financial incentive programs that encourage revitalization and redevelopment. And for the public sector, we identify opportunities to improve the streets, parks, public spaces in the settled area of Horn Payne. So I'm gonna walk through what the public sector opportunities are. And Clark's gonna walk through the private sector, the financial incentives. So the community improvement plan, it enables the municipality to focus attention on local priorities and municipal initiatives. It targets areas, it enables a coordinated, it enables you to change the community in a coordinated manner. And it stimulates private sector investment through incentive-based programs. So I always like when we shared on the next slide, when we had our public sessions, I loved the mayor's address from 2021 where she said that everyone needs to get involved, it's your community. She, she was saying to the community, what do you want? Tell us what's important, what businesses should look like, what would you like the future of Horn Payne to look like? And she, and you mentioned mayor, especially specifically, we want to map this out about what to do first. And that this is the tool that empowers council to move forward. So to begin with, Clark and I, if we go to the next slide, went through past studies and we did a deep dive on the other initiatives that you've done. And we were really happy that all of these previous studies laid a perfect foundation for the community improvement plan. And it was the logical next step of, from the strategic plan, the official plan, all made specific reference to the importance of a community improvement plan. So on the next few slides, we shared with the community, the, our point of departure. So we looked at how lands were designated in the official plan for residential and mixed-use commercial employment rural. We can go to the next slide. We looked at zoning to make sure there was nothing that was standing in the way of some of the suggestions that we were anticipating making. And you can see always, you'll see our, the scope of the improvement plan is outlined in the solid red line. If we can go to the next slide, we looked at lands that were owned by the municipality. And we understand that this mapping is being updated. And so as soon as we get new information, it's easy for us to update this, this map before the document is finalized. The next slide, we were particularly interested in the location of parks and open spaces because we know how important those are. They're a really important attribute for attracting new residents, for encouraging visitors to come off the highway and spend a little bit of time in Horn Payne. So we wanted to really understand where they were. And then the next slide, we're mapping the retail and commercial uses in Horn Payne. And so that gave us a really good sense where they were clustered and where we should focus activities. On the next slide, we've been really interested in and keenly watching the progress on the new hotel. The drawing on the left is showing its site plan overlaid on an air photo of Horn Payne. Because we, we wanted to understand exactly where it was located and how it related to other uses close by. And the, the image on the right is an illustration from the developers. The next slide, we highlight the road hierarchy. We want to understand where the, the most important roads are. Those are the collector roads and then the local roads are shown in yellow. And then the, the last map we did was mapping all the natural heritage features. And they're illustrated on this diagram. So you're seeing wooded areas in light green, wetlands in darker green, the rivers in the light blue. So on the next slide, we, I had the opportunity to speak with councillors one-on-one early in the exercise and to business owners. And this is a summary, we shared this when we had our sessions with the public, with the community. Some of the things that I heard through those conversations, and I organized them by topics. So I heard things like parks were too, there's too many parks or too costly to maintain. But then I heard other people say that parks are important, that they're one of the things that draw new residents to a community. I heard people talk about on Front Street office opportunities for facade improvements. I heard that there was an interest in not having traditional sidewalks, to think creatively about how to enhance the cluster of businesses, that it was important to beautify downtown. I heard things like there was a need for a youth center, that there's very little for teenagers to do. And that people talked about the lifestyle in, in Horn Payne, that it was an opportunity to create a kind of relaxed cottage where people can walk to work, live, work and play in the one community. If you go to the next slide, it carries on a little bit where people talk to me about the Centre of Ontario. I heard about the Buttercup Trails. I heard that if people want to open new businesses, the township needs to be ready to help, to show that we'll, that the municipality will offer incentives. That people told me that anyone who wants to start a business, that it's really expensive, especially for infrastructure. That there's no money for incentives and we hope to change this at the end of the presentation. They want to be able to bring more people into the community. On the next slide, we held a public information session, a virtual session back in June. And we had really terrific conversations with people who joined the meeting. The presentation was posted online. And these are some of the things that we heard from residents who joined the meeting. We'll go to the next slide. I want to use these images to make the point about the importance of the visual appeal of Horn Payne. In particular, the streets and a focus on pedestrians. You're so lucky that everything's within a close walk. You can walk to the schools, to the hospital, to the shops, to the services. And you want to make that walk as appealing as you possibly can. So on the next slide, we, Clark and I and the township staff team that we worked with, we developed this list of eight priorities to attract more businesses. We know that that's top of the list for councillors in particular. We want to make Horn Payne, we want to be able to attract more people to live in Horn Payne. And that's especially with improved broadband internet. Want to create the year-round tourist destination, the centre of opportunity, or centre of Ontario, sorry. Want to identify opportunities for the municipally-owned properties, beautify the settlement area, provide more amenities with respect to parks and facilities, build safe pedestrian connections. And then make some suggestions for marketing, branding and signage. So the next slide, we were, just pulled some newspaper headings because we're, everybody's been intrigued by what happens during COVID and post-COVID, if we're ever post-COVID. And we see that there's a lot of small communities trying to encourage new residents to come and work remotely in their communities. And we're seeing this big and small places, but we're particularly intrigued by the appeal of smaller places in Ontario. So the map on the following page maps 10 municipal possibilities. They are improving sidewalk and walking path connections on the orange route, which connect, which is really clear route that takes you right to the community center. And along that route, improving the streetscape through trees and use of banners and light poles. I'm gonna show you a couple of images. To think about improving the trail and overlook at Jackfish River. And we're finding a couple of locations where that might were. To improve wayfinding and signage throughout. To look at the primary parks in Horn Payne identified with the number five. And we made some specific suggestions for each one of those. To enhance the business area at third and front. To expand the facilities that are operating, that are, and we know you're well underway with that on some of that as well, at the arena. We heard some suggestions to, for a new township office, the new hotel. And then overall, marketing the area as an eco-tourism adventure, tourism destination. If you go to the next slide, let me show you just a few photo montages that the team prepared. So here we are, looking towards Third Avenue. If you go to the next slide, it, it illustrates a concept of the opportunity of bringing trees right into the urban settlement. You are so lucky to be surrounded by such a lush landscape. But when you look at the streets in the urban settlement area, you don't get the benefit of those trees. And we certainly heard some of this from residents that joined the public session. So you're seeing trees that are brought into the, the road edges. We're seeing crosswalks that are clearly defined to make it easy to pass. We're seeing parking that's organized, we're seeing sidewalks that are clearly marked so that it's, it's a welcoming and appealing place for people to wander around. If we look at another view, the next slide, we're looking at Third Avenue towards front. And on the next slide, similar to the other illustration, we're looking at trying to bring new trees right close to the street, organizing parking, adding banners to add some color. Clearly defining the sidewalk, clearly defining the, the safe places for people to walk. And then here, the next slide, we're looking on Third Avenue towards Nessa Medina. And on the next slide, on this image, because it's a rural cross-section where there's ditches and we don't want to mess with the cross-section of the road. So we're showing the opportunity of simply painting a clear route where pedestrians and cyclists can go so that they feel safe when walking along this important connection. And then the next slide, we're looking up towards the community center and a similar approach when we're saying, let's, let's rejig the, the lane widths for travel, for traffic and carve out a clearly defined route for people to walk along and cycle. And we shared with our community on the next slide, so many examples where communities, big and small, have taken on the opportunity of painting things like crosswalks and it becomes a community building exercise. The next one, we're looking at Becker Street, looking towards front. And so here's the Three Bears, just on entrance to the community. And then the following image shows again, bringing some trees right close to the street edge, making a clearly defined route for crossing. Bringing site furnishings and amenities out close to the street edge so people can see that this is a really welcoming place to stop. We, as part of our exercise on the next slide, did a high order of magnitude estimate of the cost of streetscape improvement. And I know that the township staff have already used these estimates for some funding applications, which is terrific. Now I want to hand it over to Clark to walk through some of the incentive programs that we're suggesting. If you can go to the next slide. Clark, and I'll let you advance some.
Okay, thanks, John. Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, it's perfect, yeah, perfect.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to Mayor and council for this opportunity tonight to talk a bit about the business incentive side of community improvement plans. And in the report that we've provided to you, the first section of the private realm incentives talks a bit about the, the overall types of business incentives that any municipality in Ontario can put in, well, most can put into place. And there's really four types. There are those matching construction grants, there are rebates on fees that the municipality charges. There's an opportunity to rebate grants through a tax increment process or rebate taxes through an increment process. And also an opportunity for loans. You'll note in the actual report that we, we only really recommend using three of these, not, not loans. But they're certainly in the, the plan so that at some future date, if you choose to do that, you can, you can, you can use it if it's, if it's needed. We also looked at other communities across Northern Ontario to look at what types of incentives they have in their community improvement plans. And you can see a wide variety of types of incentives, some traditional, some more, you know, proactive or forward-thinking. Lots of really interesting types of incentives that are out there as examples. So we looked at 14 communities and, and kind of identified the top five incentives that, that are frequently used. So facade improvement, landscaping and parking, the rebates of permit and application fees, signage on private buildings, as well as tax increment grants. So those are the main, the main ones, are the most popular incentives. In the case of Horn Payne, we, we heard loud and clear that, that there isn't a lot of money laying around to provide to businesses as incentives. And so we wanted to take that to heart and be, be cognizant of that challenge. And, and certainly that's why we're not, you know, proposing loans, for example. But there are other ways that the municipality can provide incentives. With a small budget, there, there are some, there are some construction project grants or matching grants that could be available. But also through fee rebates and tax increment grants, the municipality can definitely offer those. So we're, we're recommending four incentive programs that are detailed in, in the plan and in the report. And I'll walk through them briefly and answer any questions later if you'd like. So the first one is the industrial investment tax rebate. And so in this case, this is a rebate that is, forms part of the, a tax rebate. So that when a, an industry or a business develops their property and receives an increased assessment through impact, that the, the difference between the pre-assessed value of the, of the property and, and the redeveloped assessment is then used to provide for a tax rebate. So in this particular type of rebate, if the company doesn't develop the property, there's, there's no increased taxes to the, to the municipality. If they do, in this case, then for a period of time, you would give them a rebate to, to kind of reward them for redeveloping. And so by, by looking at your, your regional economic development strategy that you worked with, with your neighboring communities, we tried to identify the focus of the types of industries that this would be available to. And so certainly, supply chains related to forestry, mining, alternative energy, this gives you a priority focus for your industrial investment tax rebate. So this is the first incentive that we're recommending. And it, and it certainly talks about how there would be specific types of criteria that are used, that there would be a sliding scale of rebates that are provided over the course of five years to be able to provide some assistance to the, the applicant business. The second tax rebate incentive is a commercial upgrade tax rebate. And this is where we see the interest in tourism and hospitality and retail and perhaps other types of businesses in the community. But those would be sort of the focus. And this has a similar type of program where you're providing a tax rebate after a business has redeveloped its, its, its property. And so there are a variety of different types of expenditures that can be counted as part of the redevelopment. And then, of course, again, when the tax is reassessed by impact, then the difference between the taxes pre and post-development are then allowed to be rebated to, to the business through the municipality on a sliding scale over five years again. So that, so it's a similar situation where the municipality doesn't have to have any money upfront. You're actually providing the incentive after the development is completed. And that way, there isn't a need for that, that particular type of a budget. The third incentive is a similar kind of tax rebate program, but it has a twist to it. This one relates to the interest in the municipality to attract new residents to the area. And potentially for any kind of, you know, work-from-home type situations that perhaps relate to some of your key industries, whether it's forestry, mining, alternative energy, tourism, hospitality. So the idea being is that you, that Horn Payne has quite an inventory of properties, surplus properties for sale. And the idea is to incentivize the sales of these properties and to get people into those properties and redeveloping them. So, so there are some special conditions on these to. So there are some special conditions on these to make sure that the new owner of the property follows through with their intentions. So in order for them to qualify, they would need to meet certain expectations on the part of the township. So those are detailed in the report and in the plan. One of the aspects of this one, too, is that, like other communities in Northern Ontario, there's a rebate on the property sale price. So if the new owner meets a number of conditions and redevelops the property, pays their taxes on time, that at a certain point, they can apply for a rebate on the original sale price of the property and take advantage of that. And that certainly is a very interesting incentive for people who may wish to move to your community. And that would be something that other communities don't have, and certainly would be something that would be attractive. The final incentive for businesses is a traditional business property improvement grant. And so we certainly heard that there was some interest among businesses in the community to do some minor improvements. These types of improvements may not, or likely will not, increase the assessment on a property. But what they will do is increase the kind of street appeal or curb appeal of these buildings and make the downtown look more, or the commercial area more fresh and kind of renewed. And so in this case, these would be grants of up to $5,000 per property. But the grant from the municipality could be no more than 50% of the cost that the business owners spent. And so there's some examples in the report that explain what this means. So that way, someone comes forward with a potential improvement to their property. They enter into an application and they can itemize what they're going to be spending the money on. And at the end, they'll have to provide receipts and show that they have paid for the improvements. And then they can get that grant to cover half of those costs, but only up to a cap of $5,000 per property. So that way, you could potentially help a number of businesses per year to improve signage, to improve other, you know, facade-type improvements. And those eligible expenditures are within your control. So the financial considerations of council, as I mentioned earlier, in most cases, these incentives that we're proposing don't require a budget allocation from council in the terms of the tax increment rebate programs. They would need to be managed by your staff to ensure that, you know, you're planning for them and not sort of potentially, you know, expecting that money to be coming in and when in fact, it will be rebated back out again. So there probably would be a need for an incentive reserve account to be set up to make sure that the program isn't disrupted year to year and that other types of incentives, like the commercial improvement grant program, could continue. Or if their funds not used one year, they can be moved over to the next year. And I think, too, in terms of administration, it's important to promote the program. We see many communities who create community improvement plans that actually are quite innovative and interesting and attractive to business, but they don't promote them. The business community doesn't know about them. And so there's not a lot of take-up on them. So we would certainly hope, if you put a community improvement plan in place, that you would promote it very aggressively. And in terms of eligibility requirements, there's a number of things that a business or property developer needs to make sure that they meet. And these are typical requirements for any community. You know, we've certainly tried to hone them down. I'm not going to read through all the various aspects of them, but suffice it to say that they need to follow, you know, building code. They need to, you know, prove that they've done the work, you know, lots of different issues that would, that appeal to council's fiscal accountability. You have to be accountable to the taxpayer. So I'll turn it back over to Donna to talk about these final next steps.
Mike, back on, thanks. So in terms of next steps, we will be consolidating comments that we get from council and our township staff that we've been working with. Then we will be circulating the draft plan to the Ministry of Housing. We had initial conversations with staff at Ministry of Housing when we started. Then we will be posting the draft community improvement plan to the webpage and consolidate comments that we get from the public, meet with staff to confirm the final changes to the document, prepare the final community improvement plan, and then hopefully be able to allocate some money in the capital budget for incentive programs. So with that, we're probably okay to have you stop sharing, Clark.
Oh, maybe we should leave the screen up just in case people are to refer to it.
Want to go to a slot? Okay, yeah.
Yeah. So I just have a couple of questions before I open up the floor. So moving forward in our next steps, so there's still going to be opportunity for the community to comment?
Correct.
And see this and put that in. And what's your timeline on that? Do you have a?
We don't have a hard deadline. So I would take direction from staff in terms of how much time we should leave the document up.
Okay, and and when would, when are you looking at actually presenting the final plan? Because you have to send it to the, you have to circulate it to the Ministry of Housing first.
Yeah. No, they don't have to approve it. They just are a kind of a commenting and advisory. They have a commenting and advisory role. So on other projects, we send it to them. We have a meeting. They give us some comments based on their experience with other CIPs. And so we won't be held up waiting for them to officially approve it.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that, Donna. Okay, so tonight, we do have public consultation. That's the purpose. And so council knows there is opportunity for yourselves as well to comment. I'm going to open up the floor to the public first. And if anyone has a question or comment or wants to address, just please unmute yourself. And a few of us will be watching and will address you. I'm not seeing anyone's mics unmuting right now. I will say that the public will have opportunity, like we were just discussing, to put comment in. Now, this isn't going to run on forever. We do want to come to the final document and so that we can start actually implementing, trying to see our, put it all into action. So at this time, I will open the floor to council. But if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak, just put your microphone off mute and I will address you momentarily. So for council, question or comment from council?
Council Stefanic, Drago, go ahead.
Yeah, through Mayor. Yeah, thank you. Great report. Well done. A few comments. Especially going to Third Avenue. Before we do any aesthetics to the top of the surface of pavement asphalt, we have to do obviously the below-ground infrastructure. So therefore, we have to wait for that, number one. And we'll look at all the other ones, Front Street. Now, other question is, were you painted the sidewalk? How legal is that? Because I'm not familiar. Would that be designated as sidewalk? If there were any actions that occurred, would that be designated as a sidewalk for pedestrians and people and cycling?
Yeah, typically, it's a clearly painted zone. You see that often in larger centers where they have painted the bike lane and it's often, you know, delineated with some kind of movable bollard. So to my understanding, it's a legally defined, safe pedestrian, walking and cycling zone. But I'm going to just follow up with some of my colleagues to confirm that.
Thank you.
Question.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Council Stefanic. And I do have, we had a council, at our past council meeting, council has given direction that for all of Third Ave, we'd like to see sidewalks in our engineering that's coming up. So I'm wondering if we could have dual photos for that in the final plan where you actually have sidewalks. I'm not sure if we should, what they do, I guess the first question is, sidewalks have to go down both sides of the street? Or can we just have them down one side? Because we are looking at finding the funding for this. But at our council meeting, our discussion fell to that if we don't look at doing it now and we fix all that underground infrastructure and do the pavement, that we will be without sidewalks for a quarter of a
Okay, so we will, that's not a problem. And I'll follow up with our township staff team to get the details on the work. And then we can be really specific if we do another image where we're showing that.
Okay, great, great. Okay, so I'll do another call out at this time for community members. This is your opportunity to I'm not seeing anybody from the community right now, so I'll go with Councilor Belinda Kistemaker. Go ahead. We can't hear you, Belinda. I'm not sure why. No. And you can hear us fine, though, I guess. I'm taking that, okay. Belinda, if you go down to the side of your screen, if you hit the people icon at the top and you'll see a list of people. If you go down to your name and right-click your microphone, a drop box will come up and it'll say connected to audio and you might be able to do something in there.
It shows the mic on. Oh. Oh, that's too bad.
Sorry, now I'm muted. Belinda, Councilor Kistemaker, would you like to call my cellphone? And you could talk through my mic. How does that work? We're going to get creative here. So just while I'm waiting for this phone call, you can email your request to info@hornpain.ca. Hello, Councilor Kistemaker. Oh, is he getting feedback? Oh, I can I think you can mute your mic. Something's picking it up at your end. Do you want to try it now? It's not working. Oh, my goodness, frustration. Okay, I opened up to the floor to other counselors. And I'm wondering if we can open up the chat and maybe, Belinda, you can use the chat feature. And Counselor Peter Kistemaker on the phone, do you have any comments?
Well, I'm good for now about it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor John Perroth?
I don't have any questions right now that weren't already answered, but I'll continue reviewing the document.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Stefanic, Drago, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a supplementary to Donna's question. If it's legal to paint a sidewalk on the new infrastructure, the road, in my opinion, would be much easier to maintain that, easier to build. When public works cleans the roads, there's no sidewalk to go on. It's just the side of the road to be done at the same time. And I think it would be much cheaper to building forms pouring concrete. And I think that should be investigated, both ends of cost, expanding asphalt not at five or six feet versus actual building forms pouring concrete to create a sidewalk. I think that'd be a good saving for us. Thank you.
Yes, I have to agree with you, Drago. I would just like to see the stormwater taken care of and all of that moved under the street. And then we pull the street right over top of it. And if it means, like you're saying, to have the least amount of maintenance, but with the biggest effect, yeah, that would be great. Road with just a curb that catches the water. And I don't know, we are not road engineers here.
Yeah, I'm happy to follow up with our team and I'll talk to our township staff to get some more detail. And then we can, happy to show some options. That's not a problem.
Okay, thank you for that. And Belinda, were you able to type your question into the chat? No, she's good, okay. Okay, we still have time from the floor for comments or questions from the public. And I don't want to miss anybody. You have an opportunity here tonight. So I just, I put this question out to both Donna and Clark. Is, so you've read all these plans and you've seen all this you've put together from the ideas that horn painters have told you. But are there any things out there that you maybe haven't heard of? And from our community that you think may fit for our community?
That's a great question. Clark, have you, nothing comes to immediate mind for me because as landscape architects and planners, we look first to the parks and we made some suggestions for the parks and the streetscape. We always love looking at streetscapes and overlook of the Jackfish River. The marketing as equal tourism adventure destination. What do you think, Clark? Is there anything that you think that we haven't addressed that we should have?
Yeah, the only thing I can think of is just to expand on some of the things we heard about some smaller businesses that are missing from the community that could be helped through a program like this. And so often, when you, when people talk about community improvement plans, they're just thinking about putting a new veneer on a business. And I think what would be helpful for your community to think about is what businesses are missing? What do you want to have in your community? And then, and then how can the incentive help someone either retrofit a house or have a business in their home or something that is going to, you know, keep you from having to drive so far to access that type of business? And I think we heard about a few types of businesses. And I can't remember them exactly, but I would just, I would just encourage you to, yeah, just encourage you to think about what you're missing and then try to use the incentives to attract that, for sure. One other thing I'll mention, and it's kind of not really related to the community improvement plan, but certainly, a lot of people in different municipalities are talking about in terms of attracting residents, is if there's any way you can help, you know, encourage childcare spaces because workforce issues are a major problem. And so any role the township can play in terms of helping that situation will go a long way to attracting new residents, too. So I'll just add that as well. That's not really related to this, but it's important for resident attraction.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to put it out to one final call then to the public. We have slotted public consultation till 6:55. But because there's still open opportunity with emailing at info@hornpain.ca. But because there's still open opportunity with emailing at info@hornpain.ca. Any further ideas now you have the plan? Um, and this plan will be up on our website, the draft plan, that's correct, so people can go there. We'll share the link. Horn Pain will have some um. Items go on our Facebook page as well to get you to click on the website. Because we really do want your comments and share this with even to those of you that are just new to our community. You've come to, from other communities that maybe there's something you really loved in your other community that you'd like to see in our community now. We want to hear about it. We just want it to be a place. As a community member feel welcome and that this is the opportunity that we can put those incentives in, we can put it in the plan. And then that empowers your council to also go after further funding that we have a document to use as well. So with that. I'm going to thank Donna and Clark for coming tonight. I'll, I should just give Eileen the opportunity if she has any questions or comments or further. Uh, comments for herself at this time as well before I shut it right down. Sorry about that, Eileen. I wasn't trying to neglect staff at this time.
Oh, that's okay, mayor, for it. I, I don't have any questions or comments at this point. Sorry, I don't have any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll wait for direction from yourself, Donna and the staff. About the dates of how long we keep that email open and those comments coming. And um, and then we'll put that out to the public so the public is aware of that. And I do again want to thank you for being here this evening. Very, I'm very happy that Horn Pain has progressed to this point.
Yes, it's fantastic. It's been terrific. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present tonight. Thank you everyone. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Eileen, I'm wondering if we'd be able to put in the chat a note for anyone that comes online? That there'll be an opportunity to put in comments at info@hornpain.ca? And they could read that. Is that possible?
Yep, we can do that, mayor, for it.
Okay, so we're moving on tonight. We have 6.3 as the award tender of the above-ground Jet A fuel storage tank. And. Did, Dwayne, did you want to speak to your report before I? Um, open up for question or comment?
No, I have nothing to add to it right now.
Okay, and council, do you have any questions for Dwayne? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I'm gonna put the motion to the floor. If I can get a mover, please move by. Councillor Drago Stefanik second by. Councillor Belinda Kissamaker, whereas the township of Horn Pain was a successful applicant in the investing in Canada's infrastructure. Rule in Northern Stream part of which project was the replacement of a Jet A1 fuel system, storage tank and. Pumping system and install of a card lock system for the Horn Pain Municipal Airport. And whereas staff subsequently issued a request for proposals for consultant services to complete the portion. Of the project and whereas the township of Horn Pain received three proposal submissions as follows. Comco Canada Limited from Barry, Ontario in the amount, sorry, in the adjusted amounts of $458,832.90 plus HST. Lejoy Bros Contracting Limited from Sault Ste. Marie, Ontario in the adjusted amount of $376,262 plus HST. And Northwest Petroleum Equipment Limited from Thunder Bay, Ontario in the amount of $393,510.49 plus HST. And whereas members of the senior management team reviewed and compared the above proposals based on the criteria listed in the attached staff report. And have identified the proposal from Lejoy Bros Contracting Limited as the contractor who will provide the best value to the township. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain upon the recommendation of the public works manager does hereby accept the tender submission. From Lejoy Bros Contracting Limited from Sault Ste. Marie, Ontario in the adjusted amount of $376,262. Excluding HST for supply and installation of a Jet A1 fuel system, storage tank and. Pumping system and the installation of a card lock system for the Horn Pain Municipal Airport. And authorize the same to notify all proponents and to have the service agreement prepared for signature in order that the project can proceed. Any comments on the motion? I just have one small clerical error, just the second amount of the contractor that we are proposing to go with. We just need to have a comment instead of a period. And um. No further comment or question on the motion? Okay, council, I put that to a vote. Those in favor?
Right.
And that is carried and unopposed. Okay, it's gonna be great to see that system put in place. Thank you, Dwayne. And all of the senior management team, I have to highlight that here tonight that. It's uh, nice to see that the senior management team can get together and make these decisions together and that's a. Um, an outcome of this new structure we have in the township. Thank you, Dwayne. Have a good night. Okay, correspondence information only. If I can get a mover and a seconder please to um. Receipt of the correspondence package. Okay, move by councillor Belinda Kissamaker, second by councillor.
I'll second it.
John Perroff? I'll get you on the next one there, Peter. Council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby acknowledge receipt of the, sorry. Receipt of the correspondence information only package attached to the agenda, the regular meeting council held on Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. Is there any comments on either of those items? Okay, there being none, I put it to a vote. Those in favor?
Hi.
And that is carried and opposed. Okay, moving on is 8.1 is um. The Roma Conference. Oh my goodness, my. Agenda is not working properly here for me. Okay, we brought, we deferred this last meeting because we had quite a discussion about um. The new Cao coming into her role. Uh, thank you, Eileen, in January and that this conference is just shortly after that. Uh, her taking over the helm at the township. So we put it back on if other people would like to attend. Um, I'm wondering if we can have a discussion after our further, I'll move this agenda item. To after our CN Rail discussion because there may be the, council may want a delegation opportunity at that if council sees fit. And during this time you can think about if you would like to attend, council? Okay, so I'm gonna move down to new and other business. Discussion COVID-19 vaccination policy. Gail, would you like to speak, or sorry? I'm used to having Gail here, Eileen. I'm probably gonna do this a few times. I apologize ahead of time. Eileen, would you like to speak to the report on the vaccination policy before? Our discussion?
Uh, I don't have anything to further add or comment on.
Okay, and Gail herself doesn't have anything to add, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so I'm open up the, uh, the floor to council for comment or questions on the report from Gail. If there being none, I will get a mover and a seconder for the motion and then we can talk about that if you'd like. So move by councillor. John Perroff, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker. Whereas through bylaw number 1905, the township established a COVID-19 vaccination policy in an effort to take. Every reasonable precaution to protect the health and safety of staff, council and residents against the virus. And whereas the majority of public health mandates have now been lifted provincially, federally and globally. Therefore, be it resolved that under the recommendation of the Cao clerk. Council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby agree to repeal bylaw number 1905. COVID-19 vaccination policy at the reg, next regular meeting of council. Any comment or discussion on that motion? Okay, so it would be a process at our next meeting that we would repeal, so I put this to a vote. Those in favor?
Right.
And that is carried and unopposed. Okay, moving on to the arena, the canteen discussion. And I, Eileen, uh, would you like to speak to a report before I open up for question or comment?
Uh, no, she does not have anything further to add.
Okay. So I open up the floor for council for question or comment about the canteen. Councillor Perroff, John, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, madam mayor. Um, I was just kind of wondering what kind of uh. How much additional work is it for the township to manage that?
I think it was quite a bit of work. It was, if you read in the discussion part, it talked about. The minimal revenue that it generated, but we had to have a staff member there the whole time. So it wasn't, um, I think it's, it's not a sufficient way to use staff resources. And I shouldn't speak for Gail on that behalf, but councillor Belinda Kissamaker, go ahead. I still can't hear you. This is frustrating. Can you use the chat? Do you want to try calling in, Belinda? And just turning it off and just calling the number? Yeah, we'll just give you a second there. I'd rather have your discussion. We can wait. Hi, you're calling me? Okay, so um, Belinda's saying that she's wondering if this is an opportunity for council to relook at the canteen. And what, because we are doing renovations up there, do we want to look at putting in possibly vending machines, a possible tuck shop? Maybe this is a time to council to do a deeper dive and discuss this. Did I catch all your comments, Belinda? Yeah, and maybe public input into this as well. And we could circle that into our arena. Consultation probably, yeah. That's it? Okay, thank you for that. So I'm, I'm totally in agreement with that. I think we're going to have a strategic planning session early in the new year. For our new term of council and I think that fits right in there. We could wrap it into the public, have it part of the public consultation of what. Food services and that sort of thing the public would like. They had a restaurant, full-fledged restaurant up there for a year and a half and. I think it did make a difference for the building. One thing that I want to point out, I'm not sure. But I know when, talking with the public works manager about hazardous waste day. We saw less collection this year than last year and I had wondered if it was because there was, the food vendor was up there at the same time. And I don't know, that was just something I had wondered, so. So I'm in favor of that. Rest of council, if we can get some consensus on that moving forward and we'll put that into our strategic planning. Uh, councillor Drago, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I agree with councillor Belinda. Number one, I would have no staffing in there whatsoever. It was miniscule. Matter of fact, a difficult time attracting staff over two to three past years, if you remember clearly. Uh, I think this year, for now, I think if, say, minor hockey has a chairman, I would offer them a canteen at no cost for now. If they want to have volunteers, I would, I would have no problem not charging free. Let them use it because they'll have people, spectators. Until such time as Belinda recommended, we could work at this, our solid goals on it, but that's what we do.
Okay, thank you councillor Stefanik. I did reach out to staff and ask when this was put on the agenda if we do have a user fee pricing per day. For the canteen. And I believe we do have that, those user fees in there. Eileen, are you aware of that?
Hi, mayor for it. Yes, the user fees are in the bylaw.
Okay, so there is a day use and. Is there anything in the bylaw that says we can waive the fees?
In the delegation of authority, there is.
Okay. So we could offer some incentives to people if they want to use it, like nonprofits, like the Horn Pain Minor Hockey?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay.
If they ask, sorry?
If they ask, okay. Um, I'm, I'm on board with that, Drago. It's already there in the policy and we can as a council give direction that, that is available when people are renting. Uh, the nonprofits that they, we could tell them that, they can ask for it. Are we, we are able to do that with the staff, Eileen? To just inform people that that service is available?
Well, we could.
I can hear Gail. It's like, it's on mute, mute. I'll just come over.
Sorry, give us one second. Sorry, it's kind of, it's kind of throwing me for a loop because I don't know that it's something we should. Promote so much as it's, the ability is there. When it needs to be, like for, for delegation of authority, right? Like, I don't know if it's something we should market. I mean, if council wants that to be done, obviously we will do it, but I don't know if that was the intention. Of, of the delegation, so I mean, we'll. We'll take your direction on that. I just wasn't really prepared for that question.
Okay, so. I think just for this year is just that if people want to use the canteen for non, our nonprofit groups, that, that they're welcome. But then if there's someone that wants to rent it for profit, they can rent it, like.
Okay, so we can, we can put something out to that effect then and just say it's until. Like the end of the season or whatever, at the end of March or whatnot.
Yeah, and I think it's, councillor Stefanik, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I think it's to the effect that it's only for this year because.
No question.
Yes, we're going to.
Start and end, mayor. That's correct, exactly. And I think there's somebody that wants to rent out, that would take precedent over a group that it's a number, would get it free. So whoever comes in first, I want to rent it, I will give you $150 share it is, well, they will get the facility. I mean, it's kind of simple, really. It's not a complex issue. But I'd like to see it used when minor hockey shows up from White River, Wawa. It sure is very nice to have the canteen open, believe me. When I coached hockey, it was a detriment. Any arena does not have a canteen open, trust me.
Okay, so I think, any further comments from council right now? So I think for direction for staff, so currently this year we'll utilize it for nonprofits if they are, first come, first served basis. Of course, we'll give priority to those using it for profit and encourage the use of it just for this season. While council discusses further what the canteen's gonna look like in the future. And if we could also add it to our arena public consultation of just a few questions. What type of food or services and products that people would like to see for sale and available at our arena. And did I capture everything, council? Okay. And, and I think we should start that discussion early next year so that we're prepared. Come the opening. And Eileen, do you need anything further from us? On this topic?
Uh, no.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so there's no motion from that discussion, so we're moving on to. Okay, so there's no motion from that discussion, so we're moving on to 9.3. And does Melissa want to speak to her report before I open up for question or comment?
Hi, I just have a follow-up that I've heard from Henson Consulting, and they indicated that it would be reasonable to adjust the fees in the bylaw for inflation, which from October last year to October this year is 7%, but given that our current user fee structure does not speak to inflation increases or any increases at all, we would require public consultation to amend the fees, and time doesn't allow for that prior to the facility opening.
Okay. And so the, what we're looking at is the new user fee is going to be coming into effect halfway through the season, right? And what we're looking at is just postponing the the implementation of those fees till after that full season's done.
Yeah, the comprehensive user fee review is going to be presented to council at the November 30th meeting, so we won't, we won't have those results back before the, before the facility opens. So we're looking for direction from council, how you want to implement those fees if it wants to, if you want to postpone the facility, the arena facility user fees until the next season, 2023, 24, rather than halfway through this season.
Yes, yes. Thank you for that. Any questions or comments for Melissa? Counselor Stefanic, Drago, go ahead.
Yeah, to you, Mayor. I read Melissa's report, and we'd not implement the fees until 2023 season, 24 season, because it's going to be a mess. Number one, what are you going to tell the Minor Hockey? Once they put the, they're already registered, certain amount of dollars, it would be havoc, it would just be chaos. And I think for that small amount of money, I think, in my opinion, I would suggest 2023 season, 2024 season, full blast next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Stefanic. And I look to other councillors' comments. In agreement with Counselor Stefanic?
I'm in agreement with him.
Okay. Counselor Just maker, Peter. John, Counselor Peroff?
Yes, I'm in agreement with that as well.
Okay, so we do have a motion here. The one thing before we get off this discussion is I'm wondering in, in the background, wherever we keep our notes, we look at recreation user fees in the future, or any of our user fees, that, and this is a learning curve for all of us, there's no pointing blame here or anything like that, is if we get the report so that it finishes at a timely basis, so that we can implement it as soon as the report's done. So I don't know, Melissa, you would know better in your timely schedule, where that would be like if it's September or October or what have you. If it allows us to do that in the future, I think we should take that course of action. And I have a mover and a seconder, please move by. Counselor Drago, Stefanic second by.
I'll second it.
Counselor Peter Kistemaker, whereas in response to one of the recommendations stemming from the comprehensive delivery review completed in 2019, the township commissioned a comprehensive user fee and service charge review. And whereas the report will not be completed prior to the arena opening, facility opening in November, and whereas staff is bound to follow the recreation user fees in the existing Department of Recreation user fee bylaw until such time that the bylaw is either repealed or replaced or amended, and whereas implementing a new fee schedule through the winter season would make it very difficult for arena user groups to set their budget and determine registration fees. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby continue to apply the existing fees for the 2022-2023 season and implement the recommendations from the free fee for the 2023-24 season. Any further comment on the motion? I see none, so I put it to a vote. Those in favor?
Right.
And that's carried, none opposed. Okay, carrying on to 9.4, discussion on the CN rail. You have a few different documents in front of you, council, and we did see the, we did have a short discussion back in January, when we were looking at budgeting about these rising costs that are coming. We did do a resolution that we sent to FCM in February and put it up through the ranks. And also, you heard earlier in the discussion tonight, the Roma Conference that's coming in January, that there's an opportunity for delegation there, but I open up the floor for discussion of how we want to address this. I think it's, the amounts are outrageous for small communities to be paying. It's like, I don't think these amounts should be coming out of the land tax base and municipalities. It's just, we can't, we can't afford it.
100%.
Yeah. So I think we just need a course of action. And I'll open up the floor, Eileen, to you first, of what type of direction you'd like to see from council.
Hi, Mayor Fort. I guess in this situation, we're just wondering if we need to move forward with payment, or if there is another course of action that council would like to take?
Okay, well, we don't have, we have not budgeted for this amount, right?
No.
There is, there is no money for payment?
No, there isn't.
So what course of actions do we have available to us then? And I'm not, if you don't, council as well, I open up this floor to council too, this question to council of how we can deal with this. Eileen, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to ask if Melissa was able to give any input towards this.
Oh, definitely.
Um, not a specific question for council, but Eileen or Gail, was there any response from the information that went to FCM? Because I believe that that's what came out of our last discussions with council, that we brought a motion to FCM for the railway orders that are long overdue to be reviewed?
Uh, not to date, Melissa.
Okay.
So, so in my opinion, I think we should follow up to see if there is any movement on that, because it is something that needs to be looked at, because we're getting pinned with these bills over and over, which, which I don't think is fair, and I'm sure the rest of the communities involved don't think it's fair either, that we're always having to pay these large sums of money. So I think, well, in my opinion, it should just be, the invoice should be put on the back burner now till we do our investigation to see where we are at with those, with that process.
Yeah, I'm seeing this from council about setting the invoice aside.
Can I say something?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Kistemaker, Peter.
It's just, it's a hard, tough pill to swallow. I'm just looking at, like, September 15th, 1977, it's an archaic law. Very punitive, it's, it's, it was set up when, when the CNR was a Crown Corporation, it was publicly owned. I mean, this is a private, a private business now, and these laws, it, we, it has to be done here, that brings it back into the modern era, I believe.
Yes. So I totally agree with you, Peter, that they need to be changed. So I'm wondering if we need to also send a letter to the Transport, Federal Transportation Minister with the copies of our invoices and that, the struggle it's been, maybe the copy of our original resolution that we did back in February? And, and then also the Ministry of Transportation, if we can get their support at the provincial level? Because I did, I don't know if council remembers back when we first started talking about this. If you read through that Railway Act, nowhere in the act does it mention municipalities, nowhere. It's between the federal, provincial, and the Crown Corporation, CN, which now is transferred into a private corporation. Stefanic, you had your mic off earlier? Go ahead, Counselor Stefanic, Drago.
Yeah, I'm going to go through you. I'm not familiar, but does CN, the administration, attend Roma? Because I've never been there. Do they attend as well for display booth setup, Mayor Fort?
I believe they do attend Roma. I know at the AMO, they were actually, used to be the top sponsors, and I think you remember this, Drago, they weren't able to be top sponsors at AMO because of the drainage issues across the country with, or.
Right.
With CN. But my understanding, they are, I don't, what's your thinking of having an actual meeting with CN?
My take on this, Mayor Fort, is that we have to meet one as a mayor. I mean, we have to be prudent about this. It is nearly impossible to pay the billings they send to us as municipality. It would bury us. We know that, everybody knows that, and I'm sure they know that. So let's look at something that's more reasonable. I'm sure we will not be getting away with $0.00, but let's get something reasonable that the administration team, as well as members of council, could work with. This we cannot. And it's going to go back and forth for a while, but I think if you sit down with Daniel Salvatore, and, you know, whoever administration team they have, and give them all the data, show them our budget. I mean, our budget is a public document. We cannot afford to pay that amount. End of story, no discussion. And they could try to hopefully negotiate something there. Thank you.
Yeah, we could start, I think we could start the dialogue with Daniel Salvatore ahead of time. I'm just not sure, just understanding what's happened with the drainage issues with CN, I'm just not sure how, how that would go. So I think that would be a good initial meeting, because he'd be able to tell us how they're going to approach the policy. Melissa, I saw that you wanted to speak.
Mayor Fort, I was wondering, when it does come down to paying these bills, if you would take a good look at the invoices to see if there are any discrepancies in the invoices? Because we were going through it, and we noticed that the mileage isn't consistent, and we're not railroaders, so we don't really know what that lingo is all about. So maybe if you could go through it with a fine-tooth comb and see if they're actually charging stuff that has to do with that crossing? Because I know we came in, we came into contact with that with the last bill, and they ended up retracting it, and they haven't sent the revised one yet, and that's been quite some time now, when we found some mistakes.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to refer that. I think that's a great idea, but it puts me in a huge conflict. So I'm going to refer that, that we'll talk to Daniel first. So, yeah. I, I think it would be a great suggestion, Melissa, but I do think that legally, I'm not, I'm bound not to do that to my employer, so. But I'm sure we can talk to Daniel about it, and there is someone that should be able to verify at CN those mileages, and I'm sure we get expertise outside of our council to do that as well. I'm moving along in the questions, or for moving forward, if we were to, okay, so our steps forward, sorry, I lost my train of thought here. Our steps forwards are to contact Daniel Salvatore at CN, see if there's any way we can cut our billing. I think we should still make letters and move it up to the Ministry of Transportation at both the province and the federal, just so, because this isn't dealing with these invoices as across the province. I know I've talked to other municipalities, and it's really, it comes down to is there needs to be a shared agreement, but it shouldn't be coming out of the municipality's pocket and the land tax that homeowners are paying. Is there anything further that we want to do at this venture? Okay, and Eileen, do you need any further direction from council? Is that enough information, or do you have any questions for us?
Um, Mayor Fort, you mentioned the letter of support to the province. Was that just a letter from them or to them, or?
I just want to clarify. Yeah, I think what we should do is approach the province and see if they would be supportive to us in this, and look for their direction as well. Like, this is way beyond Horn Pain's municipality and R2 crossings. Like, we can't afford R2 crossings. So I'm sure there's other municipalities within Ontario and then across Canada that can't afford it. It really is a provincial and federal jurisdiction that they should be taking care of. So it's looking for help, and if they would support us to lobby the federal government, if that's the right word, to advocate for us.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Counselors Stefanic, Drago, go ahead.
Yeah, just a supplementary, just what you just said. Why not have a resolution, and it's a municipality asking for assistance, and send to all the communities such as ours that have crossings that have also high costs, and to support a resolution towards the province of Ontario, see what they could do, and Ministry of Transportation. So get all the other communities involved with us, as a lot of times, other communities want us to be involved with their, their resolution. So I, just a thought.
Yes, okay, well, we can revisit that and look at our past resolutions, see where it went in February, and we could have the staff bring a draft resolution to our November 1st, I believe, the 1st, or the 8th, to our next meeting. And we could definitely send that along. Or even have it distributed through Phenom and Noma, so our, our staff isn't having to do all that work. Counselors, Peroff, John, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. No, I was just reading, and I agree with what you guys were talking about.
Okay, great. And Counselor Kistemaker, Peter on the phone, do you have any ideas, or are you good with that stream of action moving forward?
I think that's the best we can do right now.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on if that's all the information you need, Eileen. We can move on. Eileen, go ahead.
I just, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I just had pulled up the resolution, just so you know where it went, the one that was going to FCM. It went to the Prime Minister, it went to the Premier of Ontario, the Federal Minister of Transport, Transport Canada, the Canadian Transportation Agency, Carol Hughes, and Carolyn Mulruh, the Ontario Minister of Transportation, Phenom, Noma, and AMO.
Okay, so what we want to do then is we want to include that resolution, we want to send a second resolution. We'll send it to all of those parties again, that we need follow-up, that this is going to sink our municipality, and we need to use stronger language, that we, we just cannot, this, this is to, when we did the study on our airport, this invoice is the, the amount of $200,000 is more than what we were paying for our airport in a year. Because I think it came in, our airport fees were around $150,000, if I'm correct?
Sorry, I had muted, Gail, but she said somewhere around there.
Like, that's, we can not afford it as a municipality. I'm not sure what they're, like, we can't get blood from a stone here. We don't have the money, we didn't even budget for it, and we've talked about that in the past too, that we never see these things coming till it's too late. Okay, so if that's all the information you need, we'll have a further discussion and a motion at our next meeting on this, and we'll do what we can. And at this time, I don't, we shouldn't, the delegation at Roma, is that something we want to set up with the Ministry of Transportation, Carolyn Mulruh, or do we want to try and just have a one-on-one meeting with our municipality? Do we want to try that first, and see if she would meet us through Zoom? I'm looking for direction here from council.
Whatever path you feel. Whatever path you feel most confident with, Mayor Ford.
Well, I think we need to make movement on it, so if we could request a meeting with and her staff to address this and get their input on how we can deal with it. Maybe we should do that first. And if, you know, if it comes in the end, maybe we won't have the money to go to Roma to do a delegation because we're paying a $200,000 crossing bill. Okay, so we'll do that as well, request a meeting with the Ministry of Transportation. And I think that would be the right ministry. I refer to you, Eileen, on the ministry. Is there?
I believe that's correct, but I can always confirm as well. I can always find out.
Okay, because I'm not sure if this is something that we should be including Minister Clarke in as well? Or looking for direction from their staff first? I'm not sure.
Okay, yes, we can look into that, and I can confirm.
Okay, let's look into that. Let's find out from the Ministry of Municipal Housing and Affairs staff. They rule us here at the municipality and then follow up with the Ministry of Transportation, and then we can talk about it at our next meeting and see about setting that meeting up. Okay. Okay, moving on, we have the 9.4, the connecting links. And I open up the floor if Gail would like to speak to her report or ask or have further comment before I open up for discussion.
Just very quickly, because it's kind of a long report, I'm just thinking that it's a good idea, Mayor Ford and Eileen talked about this the other day, about possibly combining the, any road rehab that we're doing with the project that's going on in 2025 for Third Avenue. But I don't think it's the great idea to apply this year because I think it makes it really rushed for us. We're in the middle of another application right now and have lots of projects to finish up before this year end. So that's just, I just wanted to give a bit of a summary.
Okay, thank you. I thought it was really interesting when Gail and I were talking about this, that we found out some interesting facts, just going back and forth, that stormwater is covered, that the replacing the pavement, so this is talking about Leslie Becker Road, like Leslie's portion in the bridge, that you really need a bigger build, like you want to replace it all. They will replace sidewalks if they're existing. They won't put new sidewalks in. So, but they will cover stormwater. So this is, it was kind of interesting. And it's 97, or sorry, 90% funded, which is really good. So I leave it for council's direction, and you see it in here that the application deadline would be November 16th, and the CAO is recommending we apply next year and not this year, and try and push it in with our Third Avenue if we're approved. And Gail, you don't need a motion for this? No.
Hi, Mayor Ford, only if we're going to apply, and then we can get it for the next meeting.
Okay. Okay, so I open up the floor for council. Counselor Stefanik, Drago, go ahead.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. I concur with the CEO, Gail, with the recommendation to capture this in 2023. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from council? John, you're in.
I agree. We'll try it again next year.
And Belinda, okay. Okay, so we're moving on then. We have consensus of council. Peter, you're in agreement to apply next year?
Agreed.
Okay, if there's no further action on that, I think we move to 9.6, and that's the LED roadway lighting part city's pilot project. If I can get a mover in a second or move by Counselor Belinda Kissamaker, second by Counselor.
No seconded.
Peter Kissamaker. Whereas the Township of Horn Payne has received a proposal attached from LED Roadway Lighting Limited, livable cities, wherein the company proposes a cost share opportunity for an initial six-month trial of the smart city micro sensors technology, and whereas this project will monitor noise levels, traffic speeds, and incidents of damage and theft, hereby providing the potential to reduce speed infractions, increase video monitor of key areas within the municipality, and provide data that can create actionable reports. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Payne does hereby agree to support the proposed project and authorize the staff to work with livable cities to participate in the smart city project, pilot project. Be it further resolved that a bylaw and memorandum of understanding will follow at an upcoming meeting to formalize the agreement. Any comment or discussion on the motion? Counselor Peroff, John, go ahead.
Yeah, I kind of read through all this, and for right now at this time, I don't think it's something that we need to get involved in. Like, I don't know, maybe the six months, how much is it going to cost us? And I think it's a little too, too much too fast for this community to fork over the money that they want to support it after that six months even. I'm not really in favor of it.
Okay, I'll follow up with some questions, John. What is the current pricing for the six months? Can we just get clarity on that?
Sorry, Mayor Ford, just give me a minute. I'm just going to find that info. Okay, so I found the info, and it's in the second attachment, the smart city micro sensor pricing model.
Yeah.
And it is on the second page, I believe.
Okay, from my understanding, it was a pilot project, right? So we're getting some incentive to do this?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so which servicing fee would we, like, once it's done, do we even have to stay with the program?
Sorry, so I was just going to say that they, we have, the MOU has been amended. So Page 1, Section D, and Page 6 of that, Section 5, C and D, it's amended to see potential possibilities and adding any further services. So it's not, we have the option to continue with them or not. And also, I just wanted to ask if either Dwayne or Stacy could comment on the pricing? Because I believe the whole six months is free, but if they could, if they have any further input that they could give, that would be awesome.
I'll come to you in just a moment, Counselor Stefanik.
It is free for the six months.
Okay, free for the six months, and we are in no requirement to be beyond that, so we can try.
We're not obligated.
Okay. That's what my understanding was too. I just wanted to make clarity on that. Counselor, thank you for that, Dwayne. Counselor Stefanik, go ahead. And sorry about the.
Yeah, that's fine. I was going to comment, because when we spoke to them, you were there present as well, AMO. Clearly, I don't quickly, they said, six month, no cost to municipality whatsoever, 0.0 dollars. And I remember saying, that's pretty exciting. I saw dollar signs in my eyes. There was no cost to municipality. So, and there is no, as Dwayne said, there's no obligation to go further. So six months, I go forth with the project. Thank you.
Okay, any other further comments on the motion before I put it to a vote? Eileen, go ahead.
Sorry, I forgot to add that this, the updaters or the amended MOU will also be on the next agenda as the bylaw.
Okay, so we'll have the full updated MOU and the bylaw on the next agenda. Okay. Are you satisfied with that, Counselor Peroff, just because of the current concerns of costing, that it's a free initiative for six months?
Well, I'll tell you, as a citizen of Horn Payne, I am not interested in pursuing that at this time. I don't want my taxes going up. Even if we go six months, it's going to cost the township to manage it. I'm not in favor of it, no.
Okay. I want to say that I'm going to open up the floor of the rest of council on this, if there's other comments. Oh, Belinda, you're calling me or calling in? Hello again? No, I don't think so. The question is, is we talked about cameras that are previous meeting, and do we have a backup plan of what we're going to do? I believe these are the cameras we were talking about at a previous meeting, are they not, Eileen? These were the cameras?
Sorry, Dwayne, do you mind answering that question, or do you have any?
Yes, these are exactly the same cameras, the same ones Belinda and us looked at at the trade show, exactly the same company.
Okay. Okay, Belinda is saying she'd like to see us do the six months. Is that everything, Belinda? This is so unconventional. Okay. No, that's all right. Okay, I just don't, is that everything you'd like to say? Okay. Eileen?
I just wanted to further add that there is, you know, great benefits in doing the six months. There are no obligations, and the data that this, that these cameras will provide, like, it's a huge benefit, even though it's just for six months, whether we continue with them or not. But there is, we have a gap in the data, and so this will provide us with that information that, you know, that we need.
Yes. So I'm going to speak to this. I think it actually fits with what we passed as a strategic planning for a community. It talks about revitalizing rural revitalization project that we're doing with the rural development network and being innovative in small communities. So I'm in favor of it, and I just, I think it fits for that. And if we don't use it after the six months, we don't. And I'm willing to incorporate, I think, I think it would actually energize the staff because we've heard about theft, we've heard about people at our pavilion, things, the speeds that people are going in our town, and this is going to monitor all of that. So I think it addresses several of the issues that have been concerns for citizens as well. So anyway, that's my final discussion on it. Is there any final discussion before I put it to a vote? Okay, there being none, I put that to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And it is carried. Okay, moving on to 9.7, draft surveillance system policy. So this is the draft policy that's going to be put forward on our next council meeting. And this gives the opportunity for a first look at council. And how long is council going to have to input into the policy, Eileen?
They'll have exactly one week, so till October 25th to provide input.
Okay, and that's by 4:00 PM? And where do they send their input to CAO? What email?
Yes, by 4:00 PM, and I believe they can send it to the deputy clerk email? Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Do you want me to, do you guys have that email?
Yeah, or you can send us, just, can we just send out an email and we'll reply to that email? About the draft to council, and just as you know, council, we don't want to conduct a meeting there, just reply only to the CAO?
For sure, yes, we can send that email.
Is there anything in the draft policy that you want to highlight for us to take notice of now?
I think it would probably be best if Jen speaks to that, so I'm going to see if she has anything that she wants to add. I'm sorry, so I can confirm.
Okay, so I requested that this draft policy be put on for council so that we see things ahead of time before, so that we're not, after a bylaw is already created or a policy, that we're not changing it up at the final stages. So this gives you opportunity, council, to read the policy, really think about how it's going to be implemented in our community, and put any of your comments in an email in the response to that email that you're going to receive. And then those responses will be put into a report, and we can pass a bylaw or the policy. Any other further questions on that? There being none, then, we'll move on. So our next part of the meeting is going into the closed session. And I do acknowledge that Counselor Drago Stefanik will not be going into the closed session with us. And Eileen will contact you, Drago, when we come out of closed, back into open, and you can come back to this link. If I can get a mover in a second or two to go into closed, please. Move by Counselor Belinda Kissamaker, second by Counselor John Peroff. Be it resolved at the next portion of the meeting at 7:00 PM, close to the public in order to discuss the security of property of the municipality or local board pursuant to Section 239.2A of the Municipal Act 2001. Those in favor?
Aye.
And that is carried. The council will meet at our closed session link.
Mayor, just advise you, I do not even have the link to the in-camera meeting, so just let you know that. I'm staying on this public meeting, so just let you know that.
Okay, thank you for that information.